All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to open this meeting of the Perump Regional Planning Commission for February 12th, 2025. If you would all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner O'Brien will be leading us. Thank you. And we're going to take a quick moment off agenda. This isn't really an action item because of the resignation of Commissioner Deanda after our last meeting in January. She was our secretary clerk, so I need to appoint a clerk, a secretary clerk for this meeting. So I would like to appoint Faith Commissioner Semenek. She agreed to do that this evening. So she will be our secretary clerk this evening. Then we will move on to item number two, our first public comment. No action will be taken on matters raised under public comment until the matter itself has been included on the agendas. An action item. There is a three-minute time limit per person. Please come on down, state your name, spell your last name for the record. If you are here to comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will be opening up comment during each item. So that will be the appropriate time for your comments. But if you have anything else you'd like to comment on, come on down. You can come on down. And then if you could push, if you could push the button on the microphone that said, on the microphone on the podium, push the button that says push. There should be a green light, and then we need you to speak in the microphone so that we can get your, so that we can get you on the record, please.
My name is Joan Bangora.
Can you please spell your last name for the record?
B S N Boy, A N G O R A.
Okay. I'm going to need you to speak in the microphone, please. We need to make sure we get this recorded. Thank you.
I live in the winery and there's a project within 300 feet from my home.
Is it on the agenda tonight?
No, it isn't.
Okay, perfect.
But I don't know what it is. They said it's going to devaluate my property. There will be radiation and noise, and I don't know what it is. It's 300 feet from my home.
Who's "they" that told you?
It's right here. I got notices about it.
Can you, yeah, we'll take a look at it. If you got a public hearing notice, that means it's going to be on an upcoming meeting, either for here or the county commission.
I'd just like to know what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any callers on the phone right now?
We have no callers on the phone.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Linda Clark, C L A R K. I just have a quick question. I live over in Mountain Falls, and I know you recently had, I guess it was some kind of workout in the front there off of 160, right near the entrance of Mountain Falls. I want to know how come the residents that live there weren't notified of anything? I even called once the planning commission, and I called the HOA, and nobody knew what was going on. I didn't find out until two days ago, when they were practically done, what they were actually doing. Excuse me. And it's a little frustrating because it was, it went on for several weeks, and nobody knew what was going on. Maybe a few people did, but not everybody talks to everybody. So was there a reason why we weren't given some kind of notice or something to know that you were going to be tearing our streets up? Maybe it wasn't you. Maybe it's the street department or, you know, Mr. Boeing's department. I don't know who it was.
So that work was going on along Highway 160, which is a state route, which is under the purview of NDOT, not, not the county?
But it still couldn't be something you guys could have notified, because they're sure not going to.
It looks like Mr. Mulvey's going to make a quick statement, but...
We did have an encroachment permit because part of it does go into Knight County right of way on the boulevard. They were, they should have noticed. We don't notice the encroachment because it's not our project.
You don't know what they're doing either?
No, we know they do it, but it's not our, we don't go out and notice specifically for someone else's project. If it was our project and we were doing it, we would notice.
Okay, but it did affect the streets inside our community, which from what I understand belonged to the county.
Not all of them.
Not all, but main entrance doesn't?
Not that one currently, not yet.
It just seems weird, really weird. I would hope in the future that somebody would give us some kind of warning of what's going on. It's the main entrance even in and out of there, which I understand we're going to be talking about tonight because it's going to affect us even more. Thank you.
Thanks. I would just reach out to NDOT. Any other public comment? Okay. Having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close our first public comment, and we'll move on to item number three for possible action approval of the minutes. For, this is approval of the meeting minutes for January 15th, 2025. Do any commissioners have any questions, comments, corrections, concerns on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. I'll open up public comment on this item. If anybody wishes to comment, come on down, state your name, spell your last name.
We have no callers on the phone.
Thank you. Having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the January 15th, 2025 PRPC meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 15th, 2025. I'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Bohannon.
Bohannon's aye.
O'Brien aye.
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
All right, we have approved minutes. Moving on to item number four for possible action approval of or modifications to the agenda, approval of the agenda after considering requests to rearrange, hold, or remove items. Do we have any tonight's staff?
Yes, we actually have item number seven and number eight that the applicant has requested to continue. So when you get to those items, if you can take action on those.
We can do that, yes ma'am.
And that's all.
Great. All right. Do we have any other, anything else on the agenda? Okay, then I will open up public comment. If there's anybody that wishes to comment on the agenda, come on down, state your name, spell your last name.
I have no callers on the phone.
Thank you. Having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
Chair, I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to approve as submitted by Tyler, second by O'Brien, and I'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Semenek.
Aye.
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 Thank you. We have an approved agenda. Then I'll move on to item number five, correspondence and announcements. Do we have any tonight commissioners? Staff? Okay, having none, then we'll move on to item number six, Commission Committee Director Reports, starting with our B O C C liaison, Commissioner Koenig.
I have nothing for tonight. Sorry.
Shocked. No. All right.
It's been a very busy week for me. I'm still trying to acclimate. It's not, I'm not acclimating well, so.
Gotcha, understand. I know how that goes. All right, then we will move on to our director's report.
Good evening. Planning applications for the month of January, total applications received was 232, which was 43 more than last month. Total applications processed was 176, which is 103 more than last month. Since July 1st, 2024 to January 31st, 2025, there have been 1,427 planning applications received and 317 new co-compliance complaints received. Compared to July 1st of 2023 to January 31st of 2024, there were also 1,427 planning applications and 262 co-compliance complaints received. Co-compliance for the month of January, new complaints was 60, which was 24 more than last month. Closed, we had 27, which was 21 more than last month. And total active complaints through January 31st is 320. Building permits, single-family residents, we had 42, which was 21 more than last month. Multifamily was two, which was two more than last month. Commercial was three, which was three less than last month. Total permits issued, all categories, was 161, which was 35 more than last month. And total inspections, all categories, was 312, which was seven more than last month. Previous items heard by the RPC, ZCMP 2421 was an application for conforming zone change from light industrial to heavy industrial for a propane distribution business located at 2090 East Basin Avenue. This item was heard by the RPC on the December 11th agenda and was recommended for approval. This item, this application was heard by the B O C C on the 122 agenda and approved 5 to 0. ZCMP 2420 was an application for a master plan amendment, minor, to change a 9.954 acre parcel of a 55 acre parcel from R D R to R D A. And along with that, there was a ZCMP 2419. It was an application for a conforming zone change on a 9.954 acre portion of a 55 acre parcel from resident RE1 to neighborhood commercial. These were to allow an RV park located at 600 South Leslie Street. These items were heard by the RPC on the December 11th agenda and was recommended for approval. They were heard by the B O C C on January 22nd agenda and approved 4 to 1. AP 249 was heard at the December 11th RPC. It was an appeal of the zoning administrator's determination that having livestock is not in compliance with the PRPD zoning ordinance on property-zoned Village Residential, VR20, located at 521 East Hickory Street. The RPC voted to uphold the zoning administrator's determination, and the applicant has filed an appeal of the RPC decision. The appeal, AP 2410, is scheduled for the December, or sorry, February 19th B O C C meeting. And we have ZCMP 2411 was an application for a conforming zone change from Village Residential, VR20, to Rural Homestead, RH 4.5, to allow for the installation of a radio tower antenna on a vacant parcel of land located at 1331 South Barney Street. This was heard at the January 15th RPC meeting, and RPC voted to recommend approval of this item. Final action is scheduled for the February 19th B O C C meeting, and that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Then, excuse me, we will move on to our regular agenda items. Item number seven for possible action, CU 24-55, public hearing, discussion, and deliberation on an application for a reconsideration of conditions on CU 24-42, special condition of approval number eight, removal of the billboard and superstructure located at 5511 South Nevada Highway 160, Perump, Nevada, assessor's parcel number 045-011-11. D and T Partners LLC are the property owners. Brian K. Hardy Esquire is the agent applicant. This item is final action by the Perump Regional Planning Commission unless appealed to the Board of County Commissioners or as otherwise announced. And this one, we had a request to continue to the March 12th meeting?
Got it.
Okay. So this is a... So because it's a, I'm sorry. Let me ask the DA real quick. It's, it's a possible action even though it's being continued. Do I still need to open up public comment?
No, and you don't need to read them either.
Oh, okay.
It's really administrative matter that you're moving it.
Gotcha, okay. Just in the past, that's what I've been told to do, so that's what I've done. Okay, so then why don't we take items seven, CU 24-55, and eight, CU 24-54? Both items were requested to be continued to the March 12th, 2025 RPC meeting, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bohannon. Do we have a second?
Brian's second.
Thank you. And I will call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Semenek.
Aye.
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 Brian aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. That...
Commissioner Lee.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hayden is on the line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. We do have Commissioner Hayden online. I'm sorry. Commissioner Hayden? Did you want to vote? Commissioner Hayden, you may be muted on your end. We aren't hearing you.
Can, can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, good. Then I say aye. I approve. I agree.
Thank you so much. I apologize for forgetting you were calling in tonight.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
So those will be continued to the March 12th meeting, and then we will move on to item number nine, 9A for possible action, WV 24-26, public hearing, discussion, and deliberation on an application for a waiver of NCC 17.04.700A.18, subparagraph B, requiring at least 1,500 feet from residential properties. And NCC 17.04.730, parking on general commercial to allow 31 spaces where 50 are required. GC-zoned parcels located at 1,001 South Nevada Highway 160, Perump, Nevada, parcel number 038-28-212. J. Fourth Family Limited Partnership is the owner. Marissa Fairman is the, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, is the agent applicant. This item is final action by the Perump Regional Planning Commission unless appealed to the Board of County Commissioners or as otherwise announced. 9B for possible action, CU 24-56, public hearing, discussion, and deliberation on an application for a conditional use permit to allow retail fireworks sales on general commercial GC-zoned parcel located at 1,001 South Nevada Highway 160, Perump, Nevada, parcel number 038-28-212. J. Fourth Family Limited Partnership owner is the owner, and Marissa Fairman is the agent applicant. This item is final action by the Perump Regional Planning Commission unless appealed to the Board of County Commissioners or as otherwise announced. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. These applications are for both a conditional use permit to allow retail fireworks sales on a general commercial zone parcel and a waiver from Knight County Code 1704-700A.18, waiving the minimum separation of at least 1,500 feet from a residential property line. And Knight County Code 1704-730, parking lowering the number of required spaces from 50 to 31. After researching the permit history for this parcel, there is a current waiver of minimum separation requirement already in place, and a new waiver from 1704-700A.18B would be redundant. The current retail location is in the Wheeler Springs Plaza, which was developed in 1996. According to the application, applicant's justification letter, they state that the deficient 19 spaces needed on their new retail development would sufficiently be supplemented by the parking provided by the plaza where their current retail store is located. Currently, there are 16 suites operating in that plaza. Business types range from various retail stores, community facilities, churches, restaurants, multiple professional services, salons, and a distillery. The planning department does not support allowing a waiver of parking, which would place an additional burden on another property that is already below the minimum standard of parking in order to accommodate for the expansion of a new development on a separately-owned parcel. A conditional use permit was originally granted in May of 2019, but later expired and replaced by a new conditional use permit for a fireworks storage facility in August of 2023. This conditional use permit would allow retail sales in the building that's previously been approved. At this time, the applicant has an approved site development plan regarding fireworks storage. If the COP is approved, the applicant will be required to submit an amended site plan and updated building plans and permits. Upon extensive review of the application, staff finds sufficient justification to recommend denial of the waiver application regarding Knight County Code 1704-730 parking based on the findings outlined in the staff report, and to take no action on the waiver request for Knight County, Knight County Code 1704-700A.18B separation distance and approval of the conditional use permit. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, having none, then I'll open it up to the applicant. If there's anything you'd like to tell us about your project.
Good evening. Marissa Fairman, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Phantom Fireworks Showroom. As staff is...
I'm sorry, Ms. Fairman, can you spell your last name, please?
Sure. F E H R M A N.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. As staff has stated, we are coming in with a use permit for this site, as you all are, I'm sure, aware of. The applicant operates a current existing retail operation out of the site next door.
I'm sorry, I'm going to need you to continue to speak into the microphone. We need to get this on record.
Sorry. As you can see here in blue, we have the site. To the left of the blue, we have the Wheeler Springs Shopping Center. And in this building, sorry, trying to speak to the mic, this building here is where the existing firework retail operates out of. Essentially, the applicant is trying to swap the location of their retail. They're not trying to operate retail out of two buildings. We're essentially just moving next door into the new building. That building was previously approved for storage only. The applicant would like to come in and do both storage and retail. The thought behind this is to be able to service their customers out of a brand-new building that will look very nice and be an overall net positive to the site. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, and I request and respectfully request that you do the same. As for the waiver for the separation distance, as you've heard, staff recommends no action on that, as it would be redundant. So the main issue tonight is the waiver for the parking reduction. As you've heard, we are providing 31 spaces where 50 are required, and I'll show you here on our concept plan that we submitted. So the site is surrounded by the green colors. You can see here, this will be the retail storage site. We will be providing 31 spaces along here and here. Above this site is the existing retail building in the Wheeler Springs Plaza. You can see in these yellow boxes here, here, and here. Those are 46 existing parking spaces. There are, I believe, about 145 total in the overall site. We believe that there is adequate parking through a shared parking circumstance. So that is why the applicant has obtained an executed parking license agreement with the owner of the Wheeler Springs Plaza. And I apologize, we got that to staff on Monday for review. I know it's not a lot of time before hearing, but essentially, the owner of the Wheeler Springs Plaza felt that there was adequate parking today, where shared parking could be kind of a compromise for, or a mitigating factor to this parking waiver. We understand that there is an allowable reduction in code that allows for a 20% reduction when there is a shared parking agreement. We know that here that would mean 10 spaces out of the 50 required. We would still be nine short. I know the staff report states that we are 19 short. So with that reduction, if we met that, it's really only nine spaces. And then again, through the shared parking agreement, we feel there's adequate spaces. So really, it's the 46 that you see here plus 31 new spaces. We've also had the applicant do a sort of informal parking study in the last two weeks, which I'll just show you, at various hours of the day. Looking at the 46 parking spots that I showed you here, at the counts that were at various times throughout the day, out of those 46, you can see it's mostly one, two, or three. In some cases, you have five. So it's a very small percentage of the overall parking lot. Another point that I think is important here is the firework business, as you all know, it's season-driven. Their peak demand is a few weeks before the July 4th holiday, when they really see most of their business. The reality is, it's, the retail firework operation does not bring in droves of traffic, and simply moving the current retail site next door is going to be the exact same condition. We're not increasing a retail use. We're not doubling a retail use. It's just increasing storage, I guess, you know, moving storage to that one site, and then moving retail to the new site that's currently being built. The applicant hopes to complete that building by end of May, early June of this year, to be ready for that season. So that's why we've come in with this parking waiver at this time. Really, I think it's important to highlight that any demand to the current retail site, any demand in parking that the existing retail is bringing to Wheeler Springs is really just going to be transferred to that new 31 spaces. You know, it's, I believe it's going to be helpful to have that shared parking agreement. I think some deference should be given to the owner of, of the plaza, who really knows the, the demands of parking day-to-day. And... One second. If, with all of these mitigating factors, if this commission was amenable to approving this waiver, the applicant would be amenable to a periodic review, whether that be six months or a year, just to check on how parking is, if it's affecting the existing tenants in Wheeler Springs. But again, overall, this is not going to increase the traffic from the retail site, this new retail site. It's simply just a relocation. So with that, we would respectfully request this commission's approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So you mentioned, excuse me, you mentioned the reciprocal parking agreement. Do you have that fully executed?
Yes.
And recorded?
Not recorded, but we have it executed. It was our plan to record it. And if that's a condition of approval, we would certainly be amenable to that.
Has that, has staff seen the reciprocal parking agreement? So you guys are...
Yes, Madam Chair, we have seen it.
Got it. Okay, great, thanks. Would you be amenable to adding a condition that that would be, that would be recorded by March 12th?
Sure, sure.
Or if there's a sooner date? If the commissioners have a, any issue with that? So then what happens with the existing building?
So the existing building will be storage only. The applicant is under lease until 2027 at that building with options to renew. So they have no plans of, of stopping what will be only storage in that building. So that's the, the overall plan.
Okay. And then my last question for now is, have you read, do you understand, and do you agree to the conditions of approval?
Yes.
With the addition of the, of the recording of the reciprocal parking agreement?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
For this issue, during peak times, we've noticed that people park on the frontage road. By changing your retail operation to closer to Saido Trudeau, I feel that that frontage road is going to become more of an issue because people are lazy. They don't want to sit there and walk. So if your retail location's located where you only have 31 parking spaces, the, my feeling is, is that they're going to utilize that frontage road because it's going to be closer to carry everything that they bring out of your store. The only other issue I have is if the applicant were to break lease on the current store with the new store, that would leave them in a severe deficit for parking. And somebody else take over that store later on down the road and have a high need for parking spaces, that would leave a safety issue again for that frontage road, and it would congest the traffic coming in and out of that frontage road, which is important for the safety of Highway 160 from 372 all the way down to, we'll call it Postal Road. And those areas are highly congested at certain times. And again, it's not just July. It's all holidays is a peak time at that facility. And your traffic studies were taken at a non-peak, your parking study was taken at a non-peak time. I'd like, you know, in the future, to, to relook at this at a peak time, and then revisit this issue down the road to see if it's satisfactory. I like the business as far as it is. We need businesses, but we also need to observe the fact... fact that we need to have proper parking at all of our retail outlets, and utilization of other storefronts for parking is not fair for those businesses. So, I think that every business, retail business that goes in, needs to look at the parking issue seriously, and that's what the code's there for. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, I'm sorry, commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I guess, Madam Chair, this is Debbie Hayden.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one question. So, if we do not approve the waiver for the reduction in the parking spaces, then what is the applicant going to do? Are they gonna redesign the building to add those spaces, or their design?
Well, there's a couple options that they have. They do have, under Nye County Code, they do have-
Ma'am, there should be no discussion of public comment. This is public comment.
No, we're not, we're not to public comment yet, this is Commissioner Hayden.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
But, thank you. So, under Nye County Code, the applicant does have the right to appeal our decision, should we deny. So, there is that, they can appeal it to the Board of County Commissioners, and if they exhaust the appeal process, then they are, they can redesign the building, or try something again, or-
Or perhaps take some of that landscaping out of the front, and turn that into parking.
Or they can change it for a waiver of landscaping, and adjust parking that way, adjust their site that way. There's some options.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you very much for answering my question.
You're welcome. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, then at this time, I'll open public comment. If there's any member, if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak, come on down, state your name, please, spell your last name for the record, and you have three minutes. Could you please, is the, thank you. Is it, is the green button on, 'cause we're not really hearing you. Can you move the microphone closer to your mouth? Can you just reposition it?
Scott Burdette, Strategic Development, we're currently engaged with Phantom Fireworks-
Did you spell your last name?
B-U-R-D-E-T-T-E.
Sorry.
I'll learn.
It's all good.
We're currently engaged with Phantom Fireworks to help them construction manage the process. They are currently in design for flood study. Their desire is to actually, flood studies take an average of four to five months to do, and so they're doing the plans now through Bartman and Turner. Their desire is to actually increase the parking up front, but they won't be able to get that done in time to meet their, their store turnover date. And so, we're working with the civil engineer to actually redesign that for more parking at the frontage area. So, if I can show you-
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna need to ask you to make sure you speak in the mic, you can turn the mic over, and, thank you.
All right. The area up front here, we're actually currently designing that, to, to see if, how many spaces, we have an idea of what we can get up there for more parking, parking, and readjusting the parking. We know that we can actually get very close to meeting that demand, but it'll be dictated by the flood study. So, once they come back and they say what our drainage requirements are, then that'll dictate how many parking spaces they have. But they've already engaged that, because they do know that that'll be something that needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Have no comment on the phone.
Okay, thank you, we have one here in the chamber.
Linda Clark, Sillier Arcade, I'm a little confused. I'm blonde, what can I tell you? Anyway, is this the same property that everybody's been talking about, that has the trailers over off the highway? This is not. So, we're gonna have fireworks off of 372, and we're gonna have them off of 160, is that correct?
They're already existing locations.
They're already what, I'm sorry?
Existing locations.
So, are you talking about the ones that are down near the, I'm not sure where your location, and the map's a little confusing?
So, this one is next to El Jefe's, by El Jefe's, on 160.
Okay, okay. So, that location is gonna be down off of the highway?
It's already off of the highway. So, you know where the purple building is, and there's a building being constructed right behind it? That's the site we're talking about.
Okay. So, what else is we going to have, that's gonna have fireworks, other than the location everybody's talking about, down on the highway, at the other end of town? I mean, how many more firework places do we need? That's my bottom-line question, especially when it gets close to residential area.
There's a limit to the number of permits that the Board of County Commissioners issue, and I believe we're at that limit.
That will be a good thing. You just have to fight what's going on down there. I'm, I'm just concerned about the traffic. The parking, I don't give a damn about, 'cause most of these people come from California anyway, so what does it matter? I don't care if they can't find a place to park. All right, I just want it to be safe. I don't understand the reason for having two different locations, one is eventually closing down.
The existing purple building right now is the retail, and they're building next door to it, adjacent to it, they're building storage, and they're going to, then, the new building will be retail and storage, the existing building will be just storage.
So, and this is all in response to a mandate from the Board of County Commissioners some time ago, to get rid of the trailers, and make them put things into-
No, I understand that.
Storage facilities. So, that's, that's what this driver is.
Okay, not only are they eyesore, they're not safe. All right, I don't care whether it passes or not, I don't like it. We've got too many things here in this town that we don't really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Still not on the phone?
I have no callers on the phone.
Okay. Having none on the phone, and none in the chambers, we'll close public comment, and if Ms. Furman would like to, if there's anything else you'd like to say?
I'll just reiterate that Phantom like to believe that they are doing everything that the county has asked them to do, including those, I think there were Connex boxes on that storage site, that were kind of an eyesore, and they did get rid of those, so they, they wanna keep their word, and, you know, make the site look good, and service the community. So, I'll end with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any further discussion with the commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address something. I believe Mr. Burdette mentioned about a work on the landscaping, and a change that may add additional parking. Do we know how many parking spots that would be? Would that make up the 19 that we're, that we're talking about?
I'm sorry, Mr. Burdette, I'm gonna need you to make sure you're on the microphone, state your name, spell your last name for the record, please.
Scott Burdette, B-U-R-D-E-T-T-E. With the shared parking agreement, we'll actually need less parking spaces, and we're, if, depending on what the drainage looks like right now, we're up to, we're up to 12, maybe even 15.
That you'll gain from the redesign?
Correct.
Okay, so what would that leave you lacking, that you would need under a waiver?
Yeah.
Seven?
And if we have the shared parking agreement in place, it would, it would actually-
That would address it.
Put it right in the wheelhouse. Yeah. And they've already engaged for that, there's, their plan is to actually do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burdette. Any other discussion, commissioners? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion. Yeah, let's do 9A.
Madam Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
I did want to add, that if you guys were entertaining the ideal of approving the waiver, to add another condition addressing, like a two-year, 18-month addendum to that, to readdress traffic need, or traffic and parking needs at that time.
What would you like, 18 months or 20 months? What timeframe would you like?
A year, or a year and a half, or two years, either way, whatever.
So, we'll readdress traffic in 18 months?
Parking.
Parking, I'm sorry.
Chair, I'd like to add something to that as well.
Okay.
So that during the study, it's done during a peak time.
The study that we get, it ends 18 months.
And, Ms. Furman, is that a condition that you're amenable to adding to the approval, to the conditions?
Is that going to be an informal study, or do you need a formal traffic study by a traffic engineer? So, we-
Public works here. Based on your suggested retail of 12,500 square feet, you're already requiring, or we would already require a traffic study?
Got it.
So then, you'd already require a traffic study, so then in 18 months, would that just be an amendment? Or would it be a completely renewed traffic study?
So, traffic doesn't take into account parking, if you're trying to address parking in 18 months, it wouldn't, that's different.
Okay, sorry. Okey-dokey. All right, anything else?
If I could add?
Yes, sir.
If this is where this motion's going, my recommendation would be, if you're going to grant an approval of it, I would add language "subject to reassessment of the parking conditions."
In 18 months?
Whatever, whatever time period you wanna, yeah. That way, it leaves it open, that you can go back and amend any of the conditions in there.
I'm sorry, DA, subject to-
Say, "subject to reassessment of conditions of parking."
Thank you.
Would we wanna also add, during peak, July 2026 is the date where they do that parking assessment, because otherwise, it's gonna fall six months out of cycle, and wouldn't show the true parking potential that we need. So, I would put a date, July 2026, parking study be done during the peak time, July 4th, 2026.
So, if, would we have to add a date certain, or if we just "subject to reassessment of conditions of parking," would that leave enough leeway for staff to address when that is done?
I think if you just left it as peak periods, that would then give you the capabilities of evaluating whether or not they complied with that condition. But the other thing is, quite frankly, I don't know that New Year's isn't just as busy as-
It is.
-July. So, I think either, either one would certainly be considered-
That's why I kinda wanted to leave some latitude for staff to make that decision? Okay. Thank you. Okay, anything else, commissioners?
Chair, I would like, I think we should add, because if we're talking 18 months, we're really talking August 26th, so make it, at the meeting on, in August 26th.
Well, the direction, or the suggestion from the district attorney was just to add the condition, "subject to the reassessment of conditions, subject to reassessment of conditions of peak parking," which gives the, gives staff the administrative latitude to-
That solves the problem I've got, concern I've got.
And then, if they're in compliance at that time, they don't have to come back before us, because we give staff the administrative ability to make that-
To address it. Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, if you go out there in 18 months, and count parking spots, and there's 51, then they're in compliance, that's all you gotta do. Let's keep it simple.
Yep. Yep. Okay, if there's no other discussion, then I will entertain a motion on 9A.
How about a motion to approve everything that you guys all just said? Let's just keep it simple.
I need you to say-
I'm not sure that's clear enough for the-
Right, it's not.
It's not clear enough, I need her to-
I think what you could do, your motion could be to accept item A-
Right.
-as written, with the added provision regarding the, "subject to the reassessment of the, of the parking."
But, also include to take no action on NC 1704, the requiring, the 1,500 feet from residential properties, as that is redundant.
Sounds good.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, I'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Semenek.
Aye.
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 Brian, aye.
Wayne, aye.
All right.
Hayden, aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayden. So, we have an approval for the waiver, and then 9B, the conditional use permit. I'll entertain a motion on that. That's the easy one.
That is the easy one. I'll move to approve CU 2456, based upon the findings as outlined within the staff report, and "subject to the conditions stipulated in the report."
Second.
Perfect, we have a motion in a second for item 9B, I'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Bohannon.
Aye.
Brian, aye.
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 Hayden, aye.
Thank you, and that one is approved as well. So, thank you. Thank you. Okay, and then we are gonna move on to item number 10. I do need to recuse myself from this item, because my employer does have a business relationship with the property owner, so at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Commissioner Tyler.
Item 10, for possible action, WV 2425, public hearing, discussion, and deliberation on an application for a waiver of NCC 1704-740 landscaping, NCC 1704-750 lighting, and NCC 1704-760, screening walls and fences on two parcels, Zone VR 20, located at 1621 South Higley Road, and 1621 South Butler Street, Promp, Nevada. Assessors' parcel numbers 027-451-11, and 027-451-12. Grid Alliance West LLC, property owners, Nancy Moran, Energy Project Solutions, agent applicant. This item is final action by the Promp Regional Planning Commission, unless appealed to the Board of County Commissioners, or as otherwise announced. Staff.
Thank you. As you stated, this is an application for a waiver of development standards, for landscaping, lighting, and screening walls and fences for a proposed substation project. The applicant is requesting the waiver of development standards based on the following. Landscaping. Grid Alliance requests a waiver of their requirements in NCC 1704-740 for landscaping for the following reasons. The substation will be surrounded by a block wall, and the ground-level facilities within the substation will be screened from view by adjacent properties. B, open and clear areas are required to maintain high-voltage clearances and access to critical equipment with the substation. Landscaping could create unnecessary hazards and obstacles within the substation. C, there is no landscaping at the existing facility, and adjacent properties do not have landscaping. D, the project will not require water services, so water for landscaping is not available. The second is lighting. A waiver will be required for the installation operation of 18 upward-shining and unshielded yard lights. These lights are needed for emergency or otherwise unplanned maintenance of substation equipment at night. They would be operated infrequently, and on-demand to help crews operate safely within the facility during nighttime maintenance of the overhead electrical bus, disconnect switches, insulators, and other electrical apparatus. The estimated annual duty cycle of the lighting is 20 to 30 hours. And three, screening walls and fences. Grid Alliance proposes to install a 10-foot block wall with a 1-foot barbed wire on top, for a total height of 11 feet around the facility for safety and security, and requests a waiver from the 8-foot wall height restriction for development in areas zoned Village Residential. The 11-foot wall is planned for security and safety, as a taller wall will be more difficult to scale, and will better prevent entry to areas with high-voltage equipment and other hazards. Upon review of the application, staff finds sufficient justification to recommend approval of WV 2425. of WV 2425.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yes. Just point of clarity, the 20 to 30 hours, that's annual, is that correct?
Yes. Any other questions? Applicant, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice Chair, and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Scott Whittemore, W-H-I-T-T-E-M-O-R-E. On behalf of the project applicant, Grid Alliance West. Staff did a great job, I want to commend them with their staff report. Very thorough. We've met with staff a number of times on this project. Overall, just for the wider group, this is about the 17th public meeting for the Grid Alliance West project upgrades that we've had over the last year and a half. There's been public forums, there's been town advisory board meetings, there's been BLM meetings, so this project has been widely publicized and talked about, and transparency is a very important part of the process. I do want to just highlight for staff, or excuse me, for the audience, but also just for the members of the commission, on page three of four of the staff report, the background is just really important, if it's okay, I'm just going to read it into the record. Both parcels were purchased by Grid Alliance in 2023 in order to facilitate the development of the substation. The two parcels were granted approval for the proposed substation under the two SUPs listed there by the Board of County Commissioners at the May 2021-2024 meeting. The substation will be required to submit and obtain approval of a site development plan. We met today with staff on that site development plan, this was the first meeting for that process. So what's in front of you tonight, again, the proposed substation has been approved as part of the special use permits. What's in front of you tonight are these three waivers. Waiver for landscaping, a waiver for the lighting, and the waiver for the screening and walls. I think really important to this community, we've heard this talked about, the upward lighting and when that lighting would be on. The only reason that there's upward lighting and there's a waiver here, it's for emergency at night. So if maintenance had to be done critically at night for safety reasons, we need upward-facing light. There would be motion light for security reasons, otherwise there is not nighttime upward-shining light. Landscaping, I think, is very self-explanatory here as it relates to the substation, and then the screening and the walls, again, for security purposes, but it's a fully screened enclosed substation. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Whittemore.
Thank you so much.
With that, I'll open public comment at this time. State your name, spell your name for the record, and you have a three-minute time limit.
Hi, my name is Ashley Persico, last name is P-E-R-S-I-C-O. I'm here today to ask you to reconsider the project location. You are wanting to put this project essentially in my backyard. My question is, of all of the BLO land that was available, why are we putting it right in the middle of winery? I've measured from my house, my fence line, to Higley Road, which is 30 feet, which means this project is going to be located 30 feet from where my three-year-old and my five-year-old play outside every day. Again, I ask that you reconsider the location of this project. Aside from my own personal dismay, there, there in fact are desert tortoises in that area, as they wander onto my property every April up until September. Although they may be easily overlooked by a corporation, I ask that you do not destroy their habitat, nor, not only our lovely desert tortoises in their, are in the location, but the wild horses that we all got to see as we pulled in today. The wild donkeys like to walk up to, through those parcels. I know that the applicant states that they have made things aware to the public, but this is my first notice of getting this. And today I just ask that you guys reconsider the location of this project. Am I able to? Is this?
We're going to need you to speak into the microphone, please.
This is a picture of my daughter and my son. I feel like you can't really see it with the screen, but here's the road right here. There you go. The road is here. Just on that other side of the road is where you guys are proposing to put this. High voltage next to a three and five-year-old.
Linda Clark, CLRK. I agree with the young lady. My question is, and I've been questioning this for a couple of years now, why is for Rump the dumping ground for all of this stuff? And you all know it is. Nobody else wants it in their backyard. But Rump, for some reason, gets the solar, we get the windmills, we get the, all of the mining out in the mountains, and we get the gridlock. Why was gridlock pick Rump? Why couldn't it have been someplace else, out in the middle of the desert somewhere where it wouldn't bother anybody? Or in a residential area where this lady lives with her two kids, and we have wild animals running around? I can't understand why we're destroying Trump, a Rump like this. It's just got to the point where you don't even want to live here anymore because you don't know what's going to be in your backyard tomorrow. So I would like to be reconsidered, to be put someplace else. It shouldn't be where there's houses and other people. I don't know what happened to the storage battery lot we were going to put across the street from Mountain Falls. After it's brought out, we don't hear any more about it. It's dangerous, and it's not fair to the people that pay taxes and live here, want to live in their houses and enjoy the environment around them and not have to worry about some power line or some box that's going to have batteries in it or the hazards from those. You guys make the decisions, it's not in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Hello. Hello, it's Mary Kay Radcliffe, R-A-D-C-L-I-F-F-E. Has there been any kind of EMF studies on this? Because that is very toxic for people, and when you've got all of that, and it's 30 feet away from somebody's house, that affects people. It causes cancer, it causes all kinds of problems, health problems for them. So that's something that needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Brandon Ross, R-O-S-S. If this has been in the talks of getting approved prior, I've owned my house for three years, so before they bought these properties, this is the first time I'm hearing about this. So I feel like the county has definitely dropped the ball to let people who own their homes know what's getting approved in that area. You have all the wild animals, the tortoises, the horses, the donkeys, and I just don't want to see an 11-foot wall right behind my house. You know, I bought my house and I like the nice mountain view that we have, and I feel like, you know, if this isn't going to do us any good, then why are we doing it? You know, with all this other solar crap and other power stuff that's going on, you know? And people are getting payouts, and what are we getting? We're getting 11-foot walls and stuff that we don't want, so I think they really need to reconsider this and don't allow this to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on the phone?
I have no callers on the phone.
One Bangora again. I'm right in the middle of this.
Can you move that closer to your mouth, please? And you need to spell your last name for the record.
Yeah, there's three houses.
Ma'am, you need to spell your last name for the record.
One here, me, and another one, that are in danger. And they, Joan.
You need to.
Bangora, B as in boy, A-N-G-O-R-A. And I am totally frustrated with the fact that we have had nothing to say. This is plopped on us in our property, in our lives, and nothing has been done about it. Nothing has been done, and it's dangerous.
Thank you.
Tina L. Bond, B-O-N-D hyphen Kuglin, K-U-G-L-A-N. I'm a volunteer with Valley Electric Association, I'm one of the ambassadors. Now, I know part of this Grid Alliance project is they're replacing all of our power lines throughout the state of Nevada, but I also know that they gave county $5 million, and they gave the Valley Electric $5 million. So if they have that type of money to give, to be able to do this project and to buy these plots of land, they should be able to take care of the houses that are in the way or buy a different lot away from these houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comment?
I have no callers on the phone.
Okay, and I will close public comment at this time and ask the applicant to come back up for a moment. But first, I'd like to clarify something. So did I understand correctly that this is a substation? So as a substation, it's providing power to our community and to houses, homes that would be built and businesses that would be built in that area, correct?
Yeah, good evening, Chair and members of the commission. Scott Whittemore, again, for the record, W-H-I-T-T-E-M-O-R-E. On behalf of the project applicant, Grid Alliance West. I brought a couple of maps up here, and I just want to clarify a few things to make sure that we're literally on the same page. So, I'm not sure, can we zoom in? Is it possible? Is that about it? Perfect. All right, I'm going to try and walk through this to answer your question. The two systems, Grid Alliance West and Valley Electric Association, are interconnected. Valley Electric Association provides power to the ratepayers. I'll let Valley Electric Association speak on behalf of themselves, but I do want to clarify the record for a few things. When the 300 feet that is noticed here, so, I'm doing my best. I believe this is the winery area over here, geez, it's hard with my pen. Those are the seven houses that got noticed because it's within 300 feet of these 40-acre parcels, okay? And then where the woman spoke about her road here. So I just want to show what the actual substation footprint looks like. These are 40-acre parcels, the two of them. Zoom in just a little bit, it will show where the actual expected footprint is. So this is very important. These parcels were specifically chosen, and location is not at issue tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. This way? I appreciate that. So, the special use permit for both of these parcels has been approved by the Board of County Commissioners. There were several meetings associated with the location. What's important here is the area that's shaded is the area that is planned for development. 80 acres between the two 40-acre parcels, the total walled-in substation is less than five acres. The total area of disturbance with the road and the drainage and the grading necessary is about 10 acres. But I do want to show you one final map. And actually, if we can zoom out just a little bit, I know I'm asking a lot here. Or maybe I'll go this way. Doing my best. The road? The winery? Parsons Road, I just want to be clear about that, where the winery is. It's hundreds of feet to the corner, so it is, the substation is not currently in anyone's backyard. The land to the south of this is open and vacant. My understanding is, I believe, the landowner has plans to build residential subdivisions at some point in the future, but if we go back to this map, and I apologize, Commissioner, I'm trying to be as thorough with the concerns that are being raised here tonight as to the location. The area to the south is not a residential development. We are not, and I apologize, the road to the west, where the concern was raised by a couple of the members, we are not directly adjacent. Again, it's several hundred feet to where the substation is actually going to be located in both directions. So. I don't have the exact number, I'm not, there are in both directions to the substation. I can get you the exact numbers. But the location itself, the two parcels have been approved as part of the special use permit. The reason we chose the area was in the middle of the two 80 acres. It was designed with locational impacts in mind to be, to offset as much as possible. So the project did not purchase an easement, the project did not purchase that five acres, it purchased 80 acres to situate that substation as close to the middle and as far away from the residential areas as possible. It's the maximum amount that we could justify in either direction. So overall, there's Pomp Substation to the west of this, there's Gambert Substation, both of which are surrounded by residential. Transmission and substations often appear in residential areas. So again, the matter before you tonight is a request for three waivers, but I did want to be as thorough as possible from just a locational aspect and the concerns that were raised. I know noticing criteria can sometimes present a bubble that looks like the parcels are right on top of them. The substation design was designed with the, with the community in mind, with trying to take those impacts and lessen them to the greatest extent possible. Again, five acres of total disturbance for the walled substation itself. Any questions from that? And I know there was a lot of maps and, you know, it's hard to see on this screen. And I'm happy to provide these, I think that's really important. These are public documents. In this process, through the BLM in particular, I think the routing has been available since August of like last year, there's been multiple meetings. We've had lots of public forums, we held two in the town of Pomp. We've held Beatty meetings, we've held Ambergosha meetings. I understand, you know, concerns that are being brought here tonight, but again, lots of transparency was intended and I believe effectuated through like 16 or 17 public meetings. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant?
Applicant, you said there's 80 acres total.
Yes, sir.
And you're only using five acres. What is the intent of the rest of the land in order to satisfy the residents around there?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner. For the, I want to speak very clearly. The substation walled area is less than five acres. The total disturbance, which includes like the roadway and the grading that needs to exist around the substation to create the proper drainage, is about a total of 10. The remaining 70, to be clear, there is, this property has been approved for a substation through the special use permit and transmission structures for the in and out of the substation. There is no additional approval. I understand the word solar in this community is a hot-button issue. I understand battery energy storage is a hot-button issue. I've been at a lot of these meetings. I listen to the solar ordinance very, very carefully. There is no approval for solar on these two parcels. There is no approval for battery energy storage. What is approved on these parcels is a substation location, and what is approved on these parcels is the substation that we're asking for through site development plan review process. What we're asking for tonight is the waivers. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does. And then as a note, Valley Electric does have the additional station that is roughly behind the corner of 160 and industrial, it already exists. What routing would you use to bring in the additional wire-carrying conveyance into the site, and how would you choose that path?
Yeah, so that path. Yeah, so that path is actually been approved. So the route, I don't have here tonight. It's available at the May 21 meeting where we were approved as a special use permit. There were the maps included and all the backup. The route itself interconnects 100%. So the route itself goes from Gambert Substation, uses mostly BLM land to effectuate the north and then comes due west into these parcels and then to Perump Substation. There is an interconnect, all parcels which were, excuse me, purchased by Gridlines West. Again, I don't have the route here this evening, sir, but it is on record. That route is approved through the special use permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about landscaping, lighting, et cetera, for the waiver. With the concern that we've heard from the citizens, I know the landscaping, it appears that would be within the walls is what the antenna is, but would we not be looking outside of the walls, landscaping to help the concerns of the citizens that live there?
So there's a couple of issues. The landscaping would not be, if I heard the question right, sir. The landscaping would not be inside the walls. It would be a requirement under code on the exterior. There's no water service to this location. There's no planned water service, to my knowledge. So having the landscaping was an issue. Again, this was what was discussed with staff. The other substations, Perump Substation, Gambert Substation, Vista Substation, none of those were required to have exterior landscaping. And I think the chief concern there is beyond, it's, I think, unwise water practice to have exterior landscaping for something like this, but also the danger that it presents with overgrowth and potential for fire hazard is that there's no reason to have landscaping. And that's why it's a
And when I think landscaping in the desert, I think of more than just plants. I think of other rocks and other things that could be in its place.
And I think that this is great feedback. So to be clear, we're going to go through an entire site development plan review process with staff. So I think taking these recommendations and making sure that there's some incorporation of the concerns, absolutely.
And I think that just as an additional gesture of goodwill, once you have, because I know you have a drawing, if you could perhaps let the homeowners know how far away from their individual residences that fence line is going to be, since it is not 30 feet from them as it's interior to 80 acres roughly.
That's correct.
Also, so just so I understand this.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So your substation will feed into the Valley Electric system, which supplies power to all of us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought I understood, but I just wanted to verify. Thank you.
And just to, you asked for something, which is, I want to make sure I'm acknowledging it because my colleague was coming up. We are happy to provide the maps we have tonight, the copies that we do. The staff report itself had the generic maps with the parcels, and I think that's what's a little bit misleading because the edge of the parcel line looks like it abuts the property. And what we're hopefully outlining is where the actual substation is going to be within the envelope of those parcels. I will be happy to give my copies tonight, but if the request is that we carry forth some additional noticing criteria, we'll work with staff to mail those. So if there was a list, Steve, and you know, if there's a list that planning has, we'll be happy to mail where the substation footprint is and provide a scale and a measurement of from the street on either side and then from the edge of the property line, certainly. We can do that.
And I think that that would be helpful and very transparent to the people who were noticed within that area. So I think it's a handful, overall, a handful of residents, but I think that then that's a good faith communication with those homeowners.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments for the applicant?
Well, Madam Chair, this is Debbie Hayden. I just have one question for clarification. So basically, the 70 other acres will remain as-is since the footprint is only going to be within five to 10 acres? Would that be correct?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Scott Whitmore for the record on behalf of the project. The other acreage will not be a additional substation. The other acreage is only approved for the transmission structures and the substation, but the other acreage, yes.
Will be developed.
It will remain open space until
As it
Yeah, it would require us to come back for something different. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I really wanted to know. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate your effort to explain in detail how this is going to work. I think that that is better for all of us on the committee as well as the public. So thank you very much for all of your willingness to cooperate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for applicant? Okay, then. All right, then, I'm willing to entertain a motion. Ma'am, public comment is closed. I closed public comment, so I can't
Why is this 300 feet from my home when they have 80 acres?
Ma'am, unfortunately, I closed public comment, so I can't take your comments. But I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to go ahead and move to approve WV 24-25 based upon the findings outlined within the staff report. Subject to the conditions stipulated, and you never asked him if he agreed to the conditions. So we make sure we have to have that on the record before we do this. Conditions stipulated in this report. That's my motion.
So before I take a second, Mr. Whitmore, can you, I need to ask you one more question. Have you read, do you understand, and do you agree with the staff if approved conditions?
Scott Whitmore for the record. Yes, we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
We agree.
Second, I can consider second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. I will start the vote with Commissioner Semenek.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye and aye.
Based on the fact this is on waivers on landscaping, lighting, and screening and not about location, aye.
Commissioner Hayden?
Hayden says aye. Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, if someone can let Beth know that she can come back and pick the meeting back up, I will turn this back over to our Chair, Beth Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Tyler. Moving on to, get my agenda here. Moving on to item number 11, which is continued from the January 15, 2025 meeting for possible action, CU 24-51, public hearing, discussion, and deliberation on an application for a conditional use permit to allow a commercial stable on a 4.56-acre parcel zoned RH 4.5 rural homestead located at 2220 East Heritage Drive, Perump, Nevada. Accessor's parcel number 044-511-16. Tina Bond Kuglin and Roderick Kuglin are the property owners' applicants. This item is final action by the Perump Regional Planning Commission unless appealed to the Board of County Commissioners or as otherwise announced. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an application for a CUP to allow commercial stable on an RH 4.5-zoned parcel. After discussion with the DA, staff is recommending approval of the application based on the findings in the staff report and the fact that the zoning is correct for the commercial stable. The zoning and the master plan are cohesive and the only, we do have it included in the conditions that Ms. Kuglin obtain a Town of Perump business license for the services proposed within 30 days of the approval of this CUP. And basically concludes my staff report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Medici. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Sorry, was on the record. Yes, I have a question for staff. In reading through on page two, it notes as a denial for CU 24-51. And what I'm hearing is to approve instead of deny.
That is correct.
Staff is changing their recommendation.
So does that mean that there are different, if approved, conditions?
Nope.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead, Commissioner Hayden.
I just wanted to ask the status of the code compliance complaint. Has that been resolved?
I'll let staff answer that and Ms. Medici.
There was no code compliance case at that time. It was a cease and desist that was posted, and that is how this kind of rolled into. So it was the operation of the business without a business license and without the CUP.
But has that all been resolved? We're going to, so basically, this is resolved, correct? We're going to work this out?
If the CUP is approved by the RPC this evening, then that will be, the issue will be resolved. And once the Town of Perump business license has been obtained, the applicant will have to supply a copy of it to Planning Department to code compliance.
Okay, and then the conditions you have here, they remain? The standard approval for conditional use permit, those all remain the same, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Commissioners, for staff? Okay, hearing none then. Go ahead and if you could state your name and spell your name for the record, and then if there's any, whatever you'd like to tell us.
Tina Bond Kuglin, B O N D hyphen K U G L A N. I've attended the last two B O C C meetings, and I've read statements there. I'm going to submit them to you tonight at the end when I'm done here, but I'd like to read a statement today. Good evening. I have been in construction industry for over 20 years. I have worked with Clark County, Incorporated Clark County, North Las Vegas, City of Las Vegas, and Henderson. I was in charge of many subdivisions in Nevada, pulling permits, business license, engineering, and plans. I owned and operated my own home-based concierge company in North Las Vegas from 1998 to 2008. Cost me $100 a year for my business license that I was able to apply online and receive within minutes. I'm not new to the process of getting a business license and operating a successful business. I have been licensed notary since 2011 in the state of Nevada. I do not need any other license to operate anywhere in the state of Nevada. I emailed all the county commissioners and the Planning Commission on January 16th, the day after I was ordered to appear here. I wanted to make sure that everyone knew and had what I have been subject to since 2022. I included in those emails the affidavit of facts that had been served on the Nye County Planning Building Code Compliance Public Works and the Accessor's Office and the Planning Commission. If any of the commissioners wanted to see the full packet, I'm sure you can receive a copy from the DA's office. The first affidavit was received into the court case as factual evidence with all exhibits. When I first appeared on January 15th, I was under the impression that the Planning Commission would be asking me questions regarding me wanting a business license for my boarding facility, but that never happened. I was also under that same impression when I had the Zoom meeting with the Planning Department. In the email that I sent to all the county commissioners and planning commissions, I extended an invitation to tour my facility and ask me any questions needed, but I didn't hear from anyone. I have contacted all the legislators, the senators, with the same email and attachments sent to the Nye County, trying to help, trying to get help with the Town of Perump and its policies and procedures, along with anything else that they may uncover. I'm not here today to beg for my conditional use permit. That is just a waste of my time and my money. It's a step that should be eliminated from the licenses process since not everyone is subject to the same process. I applied and paid for a business license five months ago and still have not received it. I have lived in the Perump since 2018. We enjoy the quiet lifestyle. This was supposed to be my retirement home with my dream of having a boarding facility. I have worked with several individuals with PTSD with my horses since 2016. I had a part-time job with a company that worked with special needs individuals. RNG Farms used to work with those same individuals but lost their certificate due to COVID. It was that that led me to want to do the same thing. I live on five acres, actually five and a half. My ranch is fully fenced in. Two of those acres are fully cleared for riding, obstacles, training, or whatever someone wants to do with their horses. I have a 40-foot, 40, 450-foot arena, a 40-foot round pin, a hitching post in between. I have another 50-foot round pin on the back of the two acres. I have a six-stall open barn with two tack sheds attached at one end with matching hitching posts on each. I have two but soon to be three feed sheds, a wash bay, a hitching post, and several obstacles all sitting on the other two acres. Ample parking for anyone that comes to the property. All my paperwork regarding the reconstruction of the barn that came on my property when I purchased it in 2018 can be located on the county's portal attached to my APN number. Everything had been approved, the truscouts, engineering, soils, reports, plans, they were all stamped off by the building department once a judge ordered them to do so. I've had my state business license for Tyrod Ranch since September of 2024, and it's gone on five months that I have not received my license. I have already paid $400 to the Town of Perump. I have done everything required on your portal to apply for a business license. It's against the law to prevent anyone from making a living when it's their only source of income. I will also not allow this commission, nor the county, to drain my assets as they have done countless others that have gone through this process and are still going through the process. You have no legal right to hold up my business license, just like you had no legal right to trespass on my property to place your sign. Yes, that 20 feet of right-of-way on the county thinks it's theirs, it's actually only to be used in the state of an emergency. My property line goes to the middle of Heritage Road. My husband and I are in good standing with all law enforcement agency in the state of Nevada. We have gone through extensive background checks for our jobs, our CCWs, and some of our volunteer work. My husband has been employed with Mediwest Ambulance for over 25 years. We volunteer throughout our community, and we're always helping other horse people throughout the community. We are in the Community Emergency Response Team, known as CERT, through the state of Nevada. At this time, we are set up to board six horses, 15-foot by 20-foot, half-covered, half-uncovered stalls that come equipped with auto waters, extra water buckets, feed buckets, rubber mats, grain buckets, shared attack room with two other stallers, shared feed with one other staller, a place to park their trailer if need be. My property has a security system with cameras and solar lights, and I have two horses of my own, which have their own grove and covered stalls, along with their personal tack room and feed shed. I have attended other meetings here in this chamber. One was when the commission tried to put limits on livestock, which was shot down. I was here when Kathryn Michalini applied in 2022 for her boarding facility and was approved for 15 horses on her two acres. This is a list of licensed equine facilities in the Town of Perump. Martin and Linda Hatley, Lacy M. Ranch, she's a horse boarding facility, but she has no state license. Kathryn Michalini had both her state and Town of Perump license, but they're both expired. White Glove Ranch is a horse and equine facility, but they do not board, and they have a license that expires in 2025 for the state. Sundance Ranch license was revoked in 2023. These are the ranches that advertise on Google, myself, and my license expires in 2025. Sundance Ranch, their license was revoked in 2023. RNG Farms, state license expires in October 2025, but they do not have a Town of Perump license. Gunsmoke Ranch license expired of 2024 and does not have a Town of Perump license. These are the other ones who advertise on social media that the county stocks. My facility, of course. Big Sky Ranch, Way Farm, Sunset Rupert, she has a state license which expired in 2023 but has no county license. XBX Performance Horses, Kaylee Alexis Bush, she has no state or county license. Gunsmoke Ranch license expired in 2024, no county. Carousel Farms has neither, no state or county license. Janelle Denham, no state, no county. Isabel Tapia, no state, no county. And Stolen Pine, Nina And Stolen Pine, Nina Toll, no state and no county. There is a need in our town and in our community for legally licensed boarding facilities, which is what I'm trying to do. With people from other cities, states, and counties constantly moving to Prump, we should be helping those small businesses instead of killing them off. Since 2018, we went from 37,000 people to 52,000 people. We have 26,000 homes in Prump with the county approving new subdivisions monthly. You cannot stop progress without hurting your surrounding communities and cities. The county commissioners put a stop to a horse racetrack that would have also boarded horses from building here, which makes my facility even a bigger asset. The planning department has also attacked a hobby of mine and my husband's. We use our old horses, and we make horseshoe art, and we sell them. But the county left out my other hobby, which is crocheting and knitting, and I sell those, and I also donate them. Sorry. In the state of Nevada, for a hobby, you must sell over $10,000 a year to be considered a business. I do not know. I'm lucky if I do $100 a month. I understand that the county planning department has recommended that I don't get my license, but I do apologize, this was written before you guys approved, because I, because I questioned their policies and procedures, but it's not legal standing for denying anyone a business license. My facility is one of the nicest and securest here in Prump. We always look to improve and add features to enhance our horse experience for my clients. I will do whatever it takes to fight the county regarding my horse boarding facility, which I should have. I do apologize, I did write this for the past three days because I was prepared to have it denied. Like I said, I would like to submit this to you guys. There is a letter from Morales Construction, Renee Morales, on my behalf. Can I give this to someone? And I do want to thank you guys for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bond Kuglan. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do, if I may. This is Debbie Hayden. I'm a commissioner appearing by phone, so I would like to ask you, if two horses of your own, do you have, it's hard to tell from the pictures, do you have enough stalls for eight horses?
I have 4.5 acres, two and a half, two of those acres are totally cleared for to do whatever I want to, or expand, or extend, or add more stuff. My barn is a six-stall, open barn. Each of the stalls are 15 feet by 26 feet. It's half-covered and half-uncovered. In fact, one of my boarders is here tonight, if you would like to talk to her.
No, that's not necessary. Regrettably, I was unable to come to the property, but I can see from the pictures that the property is immaculate, and I have four equines of my own, and I have rented in other facilities, so I can certainly attest to the fact that quality boarding facilities are in very short supply for people who really care about the horses. I'd like to ask you if you have any kind of intention to cap, how many you may, you, how many horses you might take, should your business really start to boom? Because I know that my four equines are a full-time job just for myself, so do you have a particular number that you might cap your facility at?
Right now, my barn is six stalls, there are six private stalls. I don't feel like I want to do more at this time, but I do not want restrictions on it either, since the last person that I spoke on her behalf was approved for 15 horses on two acres. I have six.
Yes, and I was, I was not there that night, and I would have voted no against that, because I am acquainted with that property, and there's no way she can adequately accommodate 15 horses on that parcel.
Okay, but Commissioner Hayden, let's stay on topic.
I'm also 55 years old, so I don't see me taking care of, you know, too much.
Well, I want to thank you for your time, and I think that your facility looks lovely. And I just had, the only other question I have is, you didn't mention trailers. So if your boarder has a trailer, are they able to leave it on the property as well?
Yes, I did mention that I have an area that they can park their trailers, because I have two flatbed trailers, a horse trailer, and an off-road trailer that I have a designated area that they all park in. So yes, I do have.
Okay. Well, I wish you, I wish you good luck and success with your facility.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes. A combination of comment and question. First of all, I'm very thankful and very happy about seeing the push towards an approval. I am a horseman. I've had as many as 20 in a stable and have owned over 50 in my lifetime. So horsemanship, I'm, I'm there. What, what I also am is someone who's in business. So from that standpoint of making sure that the licenses are in place is important. It's a, it's a core portion. Good example, in our home, dealing with a cottage bakery, you have a North Las Vegas, you've got a city of Las Vegas, you've got a Clark County, you've got a town of Prump. So you have different business licenses. Part of what we do here in the state. So, so I hope you.
Just like I stated in one of my, my earlier comments, is that I've worked with all those entities. I was the one that used to pull the business license, the permits, the planning. I, they, if you call them up and ask about me, they would.
And we appreciate that. So are you willing to comply with the business license portion of the?
Yes, I was. I have been from the beginning. It was when I started asking questions, maybe too many questions, that I got the pushback. I'm, I'm a, my grandmother said there's no dumb questions, so I'm always asking questions, and I'm always learning. So yeah, I'm the type of person, even in Bible study, I will sit there and ask 50 questions.
So if I understand correctly from what you've said previously, you've already submitted everything you need to submit, it's just now you're just waiting for the process to come to completion to get your business license?
I have my state business license, and I actually.
Right, town of Prump, I'm sorry.
I had actually hired someone to do the process because of what I've gone through with you guys before. So when she started it, she started with the state, got my state license, my LLC, my tax ID number, all of that stuff that needed. So then when she herself started this process for me, she was just hit with nails, head. She couldn't get anywhere, so after a month, I took over, and that's when this all emerged. Because it's not an easy process, and I've talked to the B-O-C-C at two meetings about the process, and I kind of felt like I got some good feedback about them looking at the process and maybe revamping it and changing it, because this isn't equal for everyone. I've talked to several businesses that walked into the courthouse and had gotten their business license within three hours. That is unfair, it's discriminatory. Your business, getting your business license here should be the same for everyone, no matter what you're doing. There might be a few extra paperworks along the way, but it should not take months. It should not cut into someone's income, it should not drain someone's assets like, like it has on Michelle's. It just, it's, it's wrong, it just needs to change, and I'd be willing to volunteer and help for how much I know about business licenses.
I have one final question for you. Have you read, do you understand, and do you agree to the conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report?
Actually, I'm still learning your process, but yes, I do agree with what she said, and hopefully I'll be able to meet with them and learn how to do the next part of it.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions or?
I just want to make sure the record's very clear. This body has zero jurisdiction over business licenses. So this is not anything that's part of this. You can't waive it, you can't grant it, that is a different process. And obviously, whatever you do here today is not going to have any effect on the requirement for her to have a business license, but that's through a different enforcement process that has nothing to do with this board.
Yes.
Correct. The only part that we're hearing is the, is the conditional use permit.
That's correct.
Yep.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where do I go for the next part of the process? Is it still on your port hole, or is it in the courthouse like I've been told?
It's not in the courthouse. You have to, it's through the town of Prump.
So what I did is I reactivated your business license review application that we had previously denied, so Amanda can go in tomorrow morning and get you reviewed and approved and issue that letter for you to pull your business license with the town of Prump.
And so then I just go down the list in the portal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I'm waiting to do a motion.
Okay, well, I got to open public comment first, so. Whoa. All right, so at this time then, I'll open up public comment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak, come on down, state your name, spell your last name for the record, please, and there is a three-minute time limit.
It's me again. Linda Clark, CLI R-K. I wish I had what she had, and it's wonderful to have something like that here in our town, our county. It'd be nice to have more of that than what we're getting now. And I'm sorry, I may sound like a broken record, but Solar Farms and all this other crap we're getting is not doing anybody any good here. And I'm sorry, BLM has not helped for one bit. I'm sorry. As far as I could, they could go away and never come back. They haven't helped our horses, they haven't helped our community, they haven't helped our United States, and they're mean. But this woman has a business that is nice to have here. It's good for our neighborhood, it'd be nice to go back to our old ways of life here, in some ways, and keep it simple. And she deserves, she shouldn't have had to go through what she's had to go through. It's pathetic. I'm not blaming you people. If it's a business license, okay, we can blame them, I don't know. But we need to get them approved and get them in business here and have them do what they want to do and what they're good at. And it could grow the business, it may grow more, but putting people through what we're putting through people here through is ridiculous to turn around and see what we're getting that we don't want, and everybody keeps approving it. Thank you, and have a good weekend.
Excuse me, thank you, Ms. Clark. Come on down, no, come on down. State your name and spell your last name for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Cynthia Kirk, I wrote it down, so. K-I-R-K, Cynthia? And, you know, this was written before I knew about the approval. So, my name is Cynthia Kirk, and I'm here again today to talk about my experience boarding at T-Rod Ranch. I've been boarding there since August 2024, and I was very lucky to have found such a nice facility. Tina and Rod operate a top-notch place, one of the cleanest and safest and most spacious places I've ever boarded. I never have to worry about security there as it is fully gated and cameras are all around. My horse has full use of a huge arena and access to several round pin training rings. There's training equipment set up for borders, and even a walking trail surrounding the arena. The stalls are large, partially covered with feed bins and automatic waters in each stall. Tina and Rod also provide two sheds for each boarder to store tack and feed. And in addition to more than four acres that we have access to within the facility, there's a large, wide-open space across the street where boarders are free to ride. I aborted my horse in two other places in Prump before finding T-Rod Ranch, but the low quality of care I found in Prump led me to seek out a better boarding experience in Las Vegas. And although I was delighted at the care I received at the barn I found in Vegas, traveling back and forth 60-plus miles each way eventually proved to be too much. There are literally almost no professional places to board horses in Prump. The few that were here have permanently closed. If you're lucky, you may be able to board your horse on your property, but if not, it's often a frustrating and tedious search to find quality horse care in this town. Many Prump horse owners understand this and are sympathetic to those who want to board here. There are many properties with horses in Prump, but in my travels, I have come across some shabby places that appeared unsafe, lacked enough acreage for the horses, and were not very clean. I was also concerned that my horse would not be properly fed. But unless you are a horse owner, it may be hard for you to appreciate what it means for a facility to meet that standard of quality care. But lo and behold, I found Tina and Rod's place, which I believe was a Godsend. The environment is calm and serene. Nothing is in disrepair, and they are always there if I need anything. If there's a question or concern about whether her barn meets the proper specifications, as I said, this was written prior to what was, what was stated tonight, I would implore any and all members to schedule a visit to her property in order to make a proper evaluation and assessment about whether T-Rod Ranch should receive a commercial boarding license. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any other public comment tonight?
I have no callers on the phone.
Okay, having none on the phone and no additional comment in the chambers, we'll close public comment. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none then, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I would, I would love to move to approve CU 24-51 based on feedback from, from the staff and findings subject to any stipulated conditions in this report.
O'Brien, seconds.
Fabulous, we have a motion to approve in a second. I'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Simonic.
Aye.
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 O'Brien, aye.
Bohannon, aye.
Hayden, aye.
Great. All right, that's approved. So then we'll move on to item number 12, future meetings, workshops, discussion and direction concerning items for future meetings or workshops at date, location, and time. So our next planning commission meeting will be March 12th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the chambers, unless otherwise noticed. Any other discussion or direction, Commissioners?
Chair, when I was researching NC 17-04.920, it just caught my attention that if somebody has been through the CEU process two times and they, and didn't get their business license, for example, they'd have to pause for another 18 months, and that's something I think we should take a look at at some point in time.
Do we have any other discussion or direction tonight?
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve, for including in this manager's report the number of outstanding violations that we have in code compliance. This gives the audience a pretty good scope of the difficulties that we're running into and the numbers of difficulties. As you go around our community and you look at some of the issues that we have around here, this is, this department and the county are trying to correct these situations, and having the knowledge from staff of how many are outstanding gives you a little bit more scope as to the severity of the problem that we have in Prump. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I will open up our second public comment. There's no action on, under this second comment until items raised are on an agenda as an action item. Come on down, state your names, spell your last name for the record, and there is a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Suzy Hertz, H-E-R-T-Z. Just something to have you look into, I hope. I noticed just today a small billboard sign on Prump Valley Boulevard on the east side of the street about at the driveway entrance to the Roadhouse for R&amp;J Electrical. It's an advertising sign. I'm just kind of curious as to whether that is code compliant or not. I would suspect it isn't, and I would hope somebody could look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and bless you, Ms. Marshall.
The BOC knows me really well, so you'll know me too. Okay.
But I still need you to state your name for the record.
Linda Clark, CLI R-K.
Thank you.
I just want to make a quick suggestion. I've made it to the BOC, and unfortunately, they haven't complied, but maybe you can. Yeah, I know, yeah, it's funny. These big, beautiful screens, we have them, let's use them. We have these people coming up here with these presentations, these little tiny maps, and we're supposed to understand what's going on. And even if you look at the computer and the backup agreements, backup information, you can't see what anybody's talking about. So why can't we have them blown up or have the people coming bring their better maps so we can see what's going on when they're talking about this street versus this street, how many acres over here and how many not over here? It would make a lot more sense to people out here, and instead of trying to hide everything from us and let us just guess, and that's what it looks like. So I think we can do a better job for your public, for you, and I think we deserve that. We've got a lot of issues here and problems, and all of us need to work together to try to solve what's going on here. And it takes better information, quality viewing, so everybody understands what's going on, and we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Any other public comment in the chambers? Any on the phone?
We have no callers on the phone.
Okay, having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close our second Okay, having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close our second public comment, and thank you very much for your time tonight, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.
Happy Valentine's Day to all you ladies.